Good evening, and thank you for being a part of the Northern New Jersey Council Zoom meeting tonight. We are thrilled to have you here tonight to hear a little bit about our Camp Noby Everywhere, a virtual hybrid experience. We are so excited about what we're going to be able to do this year, seeing that we're not able to be physically in camp. And that became a very hard and difficult decision for us to make. Certainly, we'd rather be at camp, but we feel that this will be the best alternative for our scouts, and it's going to be an exciting summer camp season. Tonight, we have our camp director Bob Johnson, Mark Jenkins, Todd Sharon, which are our assistant camp directors, to go over the presentation for our Camp Noby Everywhere summer camp experience. So everybody will be muted tonight. If you have any questions, please use the chat icon to present your questions, and we will try to get to as many of those questions as we can. Again, thank you so much for being here tonight. We look forward to seeing you on the virtual trail. Bob? It's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. And again, as Eric said, thanks to everybody for joining in tonight. If there are any troops out there that you know of that either couldn't connect via Zoom or the YouTube, or ones that you think should have connected, please make sure you have them go to the Noby Bosco website, or I think the Zoom meeting will also be available afterwards. Start with an apology, and why are we apologizing? Well, certainly never in a million years did we think that we would be here where we are right now, talking about a virtual camp and not talking about stepping foot into Camp Noby Bosco. And that is something I don't think any of us could ever have predicted. So how did we come to the plan that we have for this summer? So it really started Todd, Sharon, Mark Jenkins, and I. We're all school teachers. So March, whatever the date that was, March 13th, we started doing virtual learning. And the more we talked to each other, the more we realized that we did not want all of our kids from camp to be having a Zoom summer camp. And as more and more camps were making that decision to close as their states made them, we kept seeing them, and they're all just going to be doing merit badges. And again, we talked to each other. We just did not want that to happen. So that's where Noby Everywhere came from. And we're calling it as a hybrid. You heard Eric call it a hybrid. And it is, is we're going to have our senior staff quarantined in camp. And you can imagine how thrilled they're going to be about being quarantined in camp. But they're going to be running an actual camp that you will be able to join into virtually each day and throughout the whole week. Again, somebody can let me know by email later, but as far as we know, we do not think there is any other camp trying to do this for their scouts and their troops. So we think we are the only camp running virtually that's doing a hybrid, that's going to have a staff in camp, running camp, running programs, trying to get the fellowship and the spirit all week in addition to just working on merit badges. We're going to have morning and evening colors. So the flags are going to go up, the flags are going to come down. We're going to play those bugle calls. We're going to have senior patrol leaders meetings, as well as having our regular camp leader meetings, safe swim defense, safety afloat. That's all going to be a part of what we do. We'll be running actual campfires in camp. You'll see them burning. You'll see the staff participating and doing the things that they always do that we have so much fun with. We will have our theme, which is still a secret, of course, but it will be running in camp with all the clues and activities that we normally would have in camp, of course, done virtually. And our program director, who's not connected with us, Matt Sigler, thank goodness, is back again for a second season, and he certainly knows how he's going to have to weave this in all week so that the kids at home, as well as the leaders, know how much fun they're going to have, and that it's, again, not just a Zoom experience. We're going to have honor troop awards in camp. We're also going to have that individual theme pin award. So the scouts will have the opportunity to do some requirements. It's going to be a little bit different. They're going to be designed to get the kids to do things at home that will make them feel a part of the camp experience. But then they'll win that, earn that pin award that will fit into the patch that everyone will be getting. Of course, we will have merit badges. Not necessarily the same badges as we usually have. We've added some, and some that we just couldn't be able to finish enough of to have them done virtually. Hopefully, you can tell from my voice and my look that we are really excited about being able to offer this very unique camp opportunity, and are appreciative of Eric and Mike working with us to try to make this happen. And it has been quite an adventure, as you might imagine, trying to make this all happen in such a short period of time. So again, it is something we're proud of. We think it's going to be exciting. We really want people to be a part of this. I'm going to bump over to Mark for a little bit here to ask him to talk to you about how you're going to register for this summer experience. So take it away, Mark.
So it's really very simple. If you head over to campnobybosco.org, you can take a look at all the information that Bob's going to talk about and everything that's available here. On the top, it says Noby Everywhere, and then on the left side of it will be registration. We've got a four-week program, so starting June 29th and going to July 24th. You can register for each week or as many weeks as you'd like. And there's some simple information that we'll be looking for, including the email address of the scout who's going to be participating, as well as leaders' emails so that we can keep them in touch and keep them informed about what's going on during the week.
So thanks, Mark. And as Mark mentioned, that registration is going to be done as individuals. So the scouts do have to register individually for this, but we want to know their troop so we can keep the troops involved and keep the troops a part of everything that's happening during the summer. Mark also mentioned four weeks. You're probably saying, wait a minute, is it nobe usually six weeks? And yes, it is. But as I mentioned at the beginning, we are quarantining virtually the senior staff. And so we just decided that it would not be practical to have that go for that whole time, that we couldn't pull it off. And that's part of the reason that we are doing the four-week season. But we will be able to get everybody in there for sure. I'm also going to punt to Todd now, just to talk a little bit about the importance of supporting camp and supporting the council.
Well, Aif, thanks for coming. As many of you know, coming through Noby over the years, Northern Jersey Council relies on funding from Noby to facilitate the camp itself and to pay some of its professionals. And Noby has always been there for me, for you, and for all the scouts through the years. And this is one of the years where we need our scouts and leaders to be there for us, to help us financially, to facilitate things like maintenance in the camp, paying for the properties, and some of the salaries of things like our Ranger Tom and people like that that upkeep the camp throughout the year. So we're really hoping that you decide to join us this year and support us financially, as well as get the awesome experience that is Noby under these conditions.
All right, thanks, Todd. We haven't mentioned the fee yet. We will that later. But it is extraordinarily reasonable fee. And any parent who was sending their child to regular camp is going to be saving a lot of money. Of course, they won't have Jay cooking for their child, but they will be saving a lot of money. I'm going to bump back to Mark again to talk about the merit badges that we'll be offering in camp, at least generally speaking, and also how that sign up for those merit badges is going to take place.
So we've put together a whole variety of merit badges that we intend to offer for this summer. Like Bob said, some of them are going to be once in a lifetime at Noby, mostly because you have to be online to do them. We're easily accessible online. All this information is posted again at campnobybosco.org/noby-everywhere if you want to take a look at it. The way signups are going to work is we're going to set a date next week where they're going to go through double knot. And you can actually choose the merit badges you want for the week that you're going to be up there. We intend to kind of limit class size by rotating staff or moving around staff based on interest. But we really want to have everyone in the probably 20 to 30 range in terms of classes. Scouts are going to participate in the program by doing a combination of Google Classroom and Zoom. As teachers, we're very well aware of the Zoom burnout or the whole virtual learning experience. So we want to make sure that the scouts aren't sitting behind a computer screen all day. We're going to have them up and active and engaged in a lot of different activities and a lot of different things. So they won't be sitting in front of the computer from 10 to 5, but instead they'll be up and doing quite a bit.
All right, thanks, Mark. Two of our camp's famous programs are still going to continue this summer, albeit a little bit differently. So our Trail to Eagle program, which this summer will be our 33rd year of offering a Trail to Eagle program. It's going to happen. We're going to do those sessions where we help the kids figure out how to do the eagle. We're going to offer those very specific merit badges. That's going to be in the Leader's Guide. We're going to show you in a minute. But again, the times of those merit badge classes, again, because of our limited staff, are going to be a little bit different. But again, you'll get to take a look at that. And also, our new scout program, we call the First Class Adventure. Again, this will be our 33rd summer of doing a new scout program, well before the National Boy Scouts even knew such a thing existed. We've been doing it, and we're going to run that program. Again, timing a little bit different. We're going to let those kids work on three merit badges instead of two, and our sessions with them are going to drop to two hours. But again, they complete that program, they're going to get that first-class adventure, first-class adventure flat, and they're going to really get to have that first-class experience. We call it first-class adventure. It's our new scout program. I did want to bump back to Eric for a little bit here. He's going to talk a little bit about 2021, which we're hoping will be a normal summer.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, so 2020 is what it is, but 2021, we are looking forward to hit the trail physically. So if you haven't received anything in regards to how registration will work next year, let me just kind of bring you up to date. So there are some options here. If you'd like, you could roll over if you have registered as a troop and you have put a $250 deposit down. It would be great if you could just roll that over, and you'll be set to go for 2021. If you would put a $500 troop deposit down, then you and your scouts will enjoy 2020 scout fees for 2021 summer camp. We feel that if you're, you know, that that would just be a perk for you to put the deposit down, and we'd want to recognize your scouts and yourself with the 2020 fees. To what Todd had said, certainly if you have or your troop have registered and you would like 100% refund, absolutely, you will receive 100% refund. If you would like to give partial or the whole amount of an individual registration from this year as a donation to either Noby, or if you were signed up at another camp, we will have some incentives for you at different levels. If you'd like to participate in a part of a donation to that camp to help us with the maintenance and infrastructure. There was just so many things that are going on right now in our camps to upgrade them that this summer kind of put a little bit of a brake pad on it for us. But we're still trying to do what we can to improve our camp facilities and make them even better for 2021. So Bob?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Eric, very much. And just jumping off of a couple of things that Eric said, since we will have a staff in camp this summer, albeit only our senior staff, we are going to do a lot of the things that are needed to keep camp in shape. So we're going to, we've got roofwork to do. We've got a lot of grass cutting to do. We've got repairs to do. We're going to do them while we're there. So we are going to work to keep camp in tip-top shape. And also, many of you are aware that at Noby Bosco, we have almost 40% out-of-council troops that come to Noby Bosco. Obviously, we want both our in-council and our out-of-council troops to join us. But we'd also think this is a great opportunity for all those troops in the council that often go elsewhere to let their kids have an experience with us and with the council. So again, please don't hesitate, even if you were not signed up for Noby, or if you often go elsewhere, please do not hesitate to join us for, again, a program that we don't think any other camp is going to be able or is willing to offer. I wanted to just bump and show you what our Leader's Guide, certainly changes, is going to look like. This is at the campnobybosco.org website, but I'm going to share it with you and just quickly go through a few things. I won't go, I won't take a lot of your time here. So I'm going to try to share my screen. I think it's going to work. And hopefully, you can still hear me. There you go. That's our cover page, Noby Everywhere. And view from the top of the mountain, looking down on the camp, same camp spirit, expanded locations. We have a little letter there with our camp patch, Camp Noby Bosco, Noby Everywhere, Summer 2020. And a little letter from Mark and I and Todd is there, telling you a little bit about the program, having contact information for us. Signing up for camp, again, we've talked about some of that, but you can directly see how we do that. You can see the daily schedule of the day is slightly different than a normal day at camp. Again, that's because kids at home are different and quarantine staff are different. Registration listed there, camp fees. I alluded to how reasonable it was going to be. Weekly fee is only $150. I don't think any of the parents can even get babysitting for anything close to that amount. So this is not just going to be the five merit badge potential, all the different activities in camp. So that should hopefully be something that really entices everybody to come. And again, you don't have to just come for one week. Available for multiple weeks. Merit badge registration information listed there. Talk about blue cards and patches. Everybody for each week gets a patch and a pin if they earn the pin. Same camp spirit at home. And again, I won't read everything. We want to bring the camp spirit of Noby to your home. So things we've already mentioned, but you can read through these. The theme, camp-wide games, daily colors, individual camp awards, opening campfire, closing campfire, honor patrol, honor troop, dining hall at home. We're going to try to get the scouts to do some meals for their families so they get the camp experience. We're even going to put the Catholic Mass and All-Face Vesper Service available online. Camp songs, virtual trading posts will open up with some, a few new things for this summer, but then everything we usually keep in stock. Advancement, of course, very important. This goes through and lists, talks about the new scout program and Trail to Eagle, but this lists all the badges we're going to be able to offer this summer. Again, some of the usuals, some of the news, some are missing because it's impossible to get enough requirements done. So you can look through that. Prerequisites are listed. Tells you whether or not it would be a partial. We're trying to limit the number of badges that would have a partial. I should stop for a second and mention archery, riflery, and shotgun shooting when we're allowed and when it's safe, even if they get the partial, since they won't be shooting. Bruce has been kind enough to mention that he will schedule some weekends at camp before next summer. Kids will be able to go, come up and actually finish the shooting parts of those badges. So that's a bonus kind of for everybody. Merit badge sessions. Mark already mentioned Google Classroom. Prerequisites listed, merit badge supplies. So for example, basketry merit badge costs a fortune. There would be an extra charge for that. Kids would log in and pay for that. We would ship everything out to them in advance. Talking about our counselors, we're only having 18-plus at camp. The records, the partials, and then a little bit about the first-class adventure for the new scouts. And then there's our Trail to Eagle program. Those badges are not listed in the regular merit badge schedule. That's a completely separate program. Not everybody gets in it. That has not changed. At least their third summer in camp, attain Star Scout or finish the requirements for Star Scout. So that's listed there. So that's pretty much everything in that guide. Again, that's online, so you can look through that. The only other thing I needed to mention was we always have our pre-camp leaders meeting, which is the Monday of Staff Week before camp starts. We're still going to do that. That is, of course, going to be a Zoom meeting. We'll get that link out to every leader who has their name with Ann, who has their email address. And we'll also look if there's other troops that sign up. We'll grab that email off of the website when you sign up. And that's the 22nd of June, starting at, we usually say 7:30, 7 o'clock seems to be the more common time. So we may bump that up, but we will let you know that in advance. I think I have hit everything on all of our lists, Eric, Todd, and Mark. And so Jordan has been compiling the questions in the chat session, is going to throw them out to us. You're obviously welcome to stay put for all the questions, but if you need to leave, we would understand that. So take it away, Jordan, and then we'll see what happens with the questions.
Okay, so the first one that we got. For this hybrid camp, what opportunities will there be for scouts and a troop to interact during the day? We've had some resistance from scouts to a virtual experience, in part because they feel there won't be much connecting with each other.
So we're going to have our senior patrol leaders meeting, and that's going to start right away on Monday, as will our camp leaders meeting. And then we're going to ask those senior patrol leaders to schedule patrol leaders council meetings. So then the patrol leaders will schedule with all the kids in their troop to have their meeting. So that part will continue, and we're, of course, doing the honor patrol award. So those will happen. Again, they're going to be Zoom meetings, is most likely the way that they do it. But again, we'll meet with the senior patrol leaders. They'll meet with the patrol leaders. Patrol leaders will meet with all of the kids in the troop, and we're going to try to do that at least four of the five days. We may be able to pull off five of the days during the week. So absolutely, not going to be all by yourself. You're going to meet and talk with the other kids in the troop.
With the theme and activities, we're also going to hopefully have competitions where people can work together on it, try and figure out where the item is or where the person might be located. So they can certainly collaborate on those things. Then when working on merit badges, they can definitely be in the same class or kind of working together as long as everyone's doing the requirements.
All right, Jordan, next.
Next one. What is the leader's involvement? Are there fees for leaders? If so, how are they structured?
This is the one that's going to warm everybody's heart. There are no fees for leaders this year. So as we mentioned, we're having those leaders meetings. We're going to fill you in on all the activities. We're going to ask you to then make sure you contact your senior patrol leaders, and then depending on that relationship, whether you also contact the patrol leaders. We'd also like to ask that you form your own Zoom of the whole troop, which you probably already have. So once we get the list of all the kids who are coming into camp, and we figure out which troops they're from, we will make sure that we let those leaders know that they have 10 kids this week so they'll know to come to the meetings and to be able to interact with those kids. We're also going to be doing all those basic trainings, not the long-term trainings that we do at camp. We'll do eight-point safe swim defense, safety afloat, climb on safely, leave no trace, and we'll let you know when those are. So there are basic ways like we normally do. Can't obviously do projects at camp, but everything else should be similar for the leaders.
Okay. Who can I speak to about hosting Jewish services as well?
Our All-Face Service that we have on Monday is for everybody. It's been approved. So it's for Catholic, Protestant, Muslim, and Jewish. If there's a particular time, remember we're only running Monday through Friday. So we would not be there Friday night or Saturday. If you think there's an appropriate time and you would want to do that, if you would please go to the Noby Bosco website and email either Mark or myself, and we'll talk to you about that.
Okay. My son has Zoom burnout. Can he do two badges a week or over three weeks instead of the full camp experience?
We're just not able to do that, unfortunately. We've got to structure this week by week. You know, as I said, I think once you fill them in on all the things we're doing, I think that Zoom burnout will quickly, will quickly go away.
We're also going to make our badges so that if it's an hour-long session for the badge, they're not going to be zooming for an hour. They can cover requirements on their own, outside scavenger hunts, things like that for different types of the badges. So yeah, we're not planning on sitting there for an hour zooming with them each day to earn a badge.
Okay. How do you get prerequisites signed off in advance?
So Google Classroom is how we're using to get those things submitted. That is a great question in terms of if they're ones that the leader has to approve, and that is something we have not talked about yet. Mark or Todd, I don't know if either of you have any thoughts on how we might do that.
So we just published the guide, and inside the guide, it has all of the prerequisites that they'll need to do. They can get a note or an email from their scout master that they can then upload to the classroom once they're ready to go, or once we get to camp. It's also important to notice, if you were doing something like citizenship in the community and you have to attend a community meeting, all of that stuff can start happening now in order to be ready for the summer. It doesn't have to happen during the week that they're there.
So I guess part of what happens also is Monday morning, when they first meet with their counselor, he's going to say, hey, guys, you need to get me this note from your scout master. Then that scout has to contact the leader and get that note, and you'll have to tell the leader where to forward that to. All right, Jordan, see what you got. Next.
Does scout participate in the Trail to Eagle program if they have some of the merit badges already?
Absolutely. They would need to be in the, if they've done the program before, first of all, they actually, Bill Kane, Kane, he has all those records, so he would not require them to go to the sessions. If they just want to do a couple of those badges, they would still need to go to the afternoon training session, but they absolutely can go for up to five badges, so they can go for different badges.
If scouts sign up for first-class adventure, would they be able to achieve the rank? I'm thinking about the swimmer's test.
No, and then that's not something we've ever, we've ever done at camp. So they get, they get instruction in those skills, but the idea is we're absolutely not going to usurp the authority of a troop. We will give them a piece of paper showing what they've been instructed in. That goes back to the troop. And when, when the troop starts meeting again, then the troop does deal with that. Some things usually get passed off on, but some things the scouts do have to show to the troop. So no, it's not going to be rank advancement, but it's going to be split up into groups based on what rank they are.
Okay. What is the deadline to register?
Ah, is there a deadline? The sooner the better, of course. You know, we have not set a deadline. The week before is ideal for us to make sure we get prerequisites out. But you know, we're not, as far as I know, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, we have not specifically set any deadlines.
No, and the most important thing would be, though, if you were taking archery, basketry, or wood carving, that you register at least a week in advance, so you can get the kit in advance and have it for the week. But I think we can probably take right up until Friday of the week before.
Okay. Will blue cards be electronics for out, will be, woof, will blue cards be electronic for out-of-council troops?
Boy, that has been something we've been discussing all around, trying to figure out how to do, how to do blue cards. I'll let Mark talk about that in a second. No matter what, we would mail out those, those blue cards, and the signature from the leader could always come later on those. But Mark, I don't know if you and Ann have resolved how we were going to do that or not.
We're looking to actually print out blue cards. I just think it's a neat thing when you have your eagle binder with all the blue cards in it. So we were going to mail them out at the end of the week, probably a printed version of it. But we'll certainly look into the scoutbook alternative to it, because that might be a good way to do prerequisites and stuff.
Okay. If our troop is not attending, can individuals attend and have a parent attend the leader meeting?
Absolutely. That would be wonderful. We want as many kids as possible to sign up since they're signing up individually. And absolutely, we'd want the parent to come to the leader meeting also.
That's a good segue. Will particular weeks be provo weeks?
Well, we've been discussing that, and we have a couple provo leaders who are planning on coming up. And the tentative plan is that each week, once we get the signups, we'll put together a list of people who are not affiliated with the troop coming to camp. We're going to give them to one of our provo leaders, and then they are going to attempt to contact those kids and form an actual provo troop. So really, we would take those signups all summer, but in terms of leadership, it might be a different leader each week.
All right. Will scouts also be able to get their year patch, like their first year, second year, third year veteran?
They will, absolutely. We are going to have, I should have mentioned that. They will be available, and we'll have a little form for them to fill out to get that. And the same thing when we mail out the camp patch at the end of the week, we'll also mail out those strips.
All righty. And the last one we have. My son will have football practice in the morning. If allowed by then, can he participate in the merit badge sessions for the afternoon only?
Yes, so that would be three merit badges in the afternoon. So that would absolutely be, I guess, all that would be available for him, but he's got the morning colors. If that's before practice. So that would absolutely be, I guess, all that would be available for him, but he's got the morning colors, if that's before practice. He's got the evening campfires, the evening programs, and all those things are still available to him.
We're also going to offer office hours, I'm calling them, in the evening. So that if a scout has a question or, or needs to catch up on anything, they could also catch up on stuff during that time period.
Okay, we got some more coming in. Will this experience count towards a camping requirement for advancement?
It will not, since they will not be sleeping overnight. So unfortunately, that does not fulfill those requirements. Now, an individual troop, however, I mean, I guess on a troop level, if they work out with an individual that that person sleeps under the stars or whatever at the house, that's something you do as a troop. But as a camp, we would not be able to provide any of that for you.
I think that National was actually starting to look at that for credit for camping merit badge, but they haven't resolved that issue yet.
Okay, thanks, Todd. I'm sorry I didn't know that.
I know the Order of the Arrow is already considering it as well.
Okay.
Okay, and how do I use popcorn earnings to pay?
Hmm, that's going to bump that to Mike and Eric. Or Ann.
So if, I, I mean, certainly we can make that work. That would be an individual kind of question that we could work through Ann and our registrar, so that we could transfer the money, however you wanted to make that work. So there certainly can be a way to do that, but we'd want to do that offline.
Are there specific merit badges attached to each week?
No, they'll all be offered each week.
I don't want Alan's question to get lost here, but can scouts do two or three merit badges rather than five? Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Participate in however much they want to be involved. It's up to them.
Yeah, I mean, oftentimes at camp, kids, kids will often only do a couple badges because they want to be doing other things. So absolutely, we're not saying everybody has to do five badges.
I believe that's all that I have seen. I think we, we tried to address everyone as best we can, but you know, of course, if there are any other additional questions, we're here.
Yeah, and if they're camp-specific questions, obviously go to the Noby Bosco site and email us and we'll try to answer them. Again, we've got the June 22nd pre-camp leaders meeting. The key thing for us is we really need everybody to get those scouts to get in and sign up for camp. Make sure they know that they're getting a full refund. We need them to sign up for camp. We need to really get those numbers. And, and again, hopefully you can feel the excitement for being able to do something this summer that's special, that's different than everybody else is doing. And also that gives the cancer, the kids a chance to have some of the camp spirit that otherwise they would not be able to get except for the summer. We, we do know how important summer camp is to keep the spark and flame of a troop alive. And we really, really want to be able to keep that flame of the troop burning so that you can be around for 2021.
I noticed Evelyn's question here of where do we find the Google Classroom site to upload the prerequisites? Once we make registration for individual merit badge classes live next week, scouts are going to receive an email with an introduction to the classroom and then a code that they can log into that. All the information about the particular badge will be able to go in through there. I just want to say, if you have any other ideas or suggestions, feel free to email us as well. We're trying to put it together as best we can and hope to make it even better.
I wanted to say how excited I am to see everyone in this meeting. It's really neat to see all of the leaders. Again, we usually get to see each year up at summer camp. We're at the leaders meeting when we're all hyped up for the theme as usual. And look forward to seeing you all.
Okay, thank you so much, Bob, Todd and Mark and Jordan, Ann and Mike and Chris Clark. We appreciate all your efforts tonight. And again, to everybody out there that has shown some interest towards our Noby Everywhere adventure. It is going to be an adventure and we sure do hope that you'll take us up on it. I think you will not be disappointed in a wonderful summer adventure with us. Won't be the same, but it's going to be almost as great. So until then, I think we'll, we'll end our session tonight. Thanks so much. God bless you and be safe and stay healthy. Thank you so much, everybody.